I can have your attention, please. The Monday, February 24, 2014 regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Police Department of Mission and Police come to work. You'll ask for a moment of silence. Mr. Farrell will be lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Sir, if there's one round, then move ahead.
Lord of the legions.
Goodbye, United States of America. We surrender our honor for the change, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every soul.
Before we get too deep into it, just a couple of housekeeping items. The owners of this building have asked us to not use the facilities behind us here. Other facilities are also out in the front part of the courtroom. If you need them, please use those rather than going back in the backyard that has to stop and create a space back there. For that, we'll proceed to. There's four items on it. Minutes of the February 10 meeting. The ordinance submitting the budget to account for closing up this Crimdale-Hoxe Chapel Lane project. We have ordinance submitting the budget to close out the Rock Ridge Disc Golf project. And we have the budget ordinance establishing Chapel project for the NC 87 sidewalk project. Move that we approve the exempt agenda?
Second.
The move is second, and we approve the exempt agenda. All in favor? Vote. On the regular agenda, we have only two items tonight. Are there any additions? Motion to approve the exempt agenda.
I'm sure tell approve.
Second.
All in favor? I approve. The exempt agenda is approved. For existing citizens matters, I have one citizen who has asked to be heard. They come forward now, it's Martha. Sorry, but I'm trying to ask your name. Duralami. Close.
Hello, Martha Duralami, for 73 Mount Fisk Church. I'm here to talk about the fact that we had a really large sewage spill from the Burlington Waste Water Treatment Plant that flowed in down the hall and into Lake Jordan. This is back in late January. It was on a Monday night, and at that time, the spill, the force may have broke, and about two hours afterwards, Pittsburgh Water Treatment was notified so that they would not be taking in water at that time. The spill continued till Wednesday. Finally, some public notification was made Thursday, and on Friday, it got in the papers. But the town of Pittsburgh knew about this. And I feel like we have very complicated, well, not complicated, but we have these time periods for notifications that are days long, and Pittsburgh knew about it during that time. And what I'm asking Pittsburgh to do is review their notification cards. We didn't get word soon enough. That material, which was chemicals and untreated sewage, was flowing through our county, and I feel like your town manager knew, your director of your water treatment system knew, and that you need to take into account the larger community when you have this kind of information. Thank you.
First order of all business is the site plan for the Chatham Park Solar Farm. Mr. Bass, will you comment?
Yes, sir. This is Site Plan 2014-01. Chatham Park Solar Farm is developed by Stratus Solar. The property is located off of Monture, Pittsburgh Road, approximately 178 acres. And again, the applicant is proposing to construct a solar array electrical power facility. That's been presented to the board tonight as a site plan for review and approval. Plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town development ordinances and are recommending approval subject to the submission of a stormwater discharge application and subsequent approval by the town engineer. Planning Board recommended approval at its regularly scheduled meeting on February 3, 2014. And the applicant is also here tonight and has a few brief comments he would like to address the board.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Beth Trejo. So I'm in the triennial at More Letterwood. Here tonight on behalf of Stratus Solar, I have with me Lance Williams, Jim Hallie, and Jay Cobb. But we're going to be very brief and recognize that you have some important items on your agenda tonight. We want you to know that this is not a zoning case. The solar farm use is permitted under the current zoning. Any review is just a ministerial review to confirm that we meet the requirements of the zoning. We're very proud to have received unanimous approval from your planning board, and we hope that we will receive approval of this site plan for being here tonight. Thank you, and let me have Mr. Williams.
Hi, my name is Lance Williams, manager of site development for Stratus Solar. Stratus Solar is a Chatham County headquarters business. We have headquarters here in Chatham County and warehouse space. We have one ground mounted solar farm presently in our warehouse space in Chatham County and are presently constructing a same technology ground mounted solar farm in the Monture area. As Beth mentioned, we've had approval, recognition for approval from the planning board. It's a permitted use since present zoning and permitted use under any contemplated rezoning that occurred recently in Pittsburgh. Our use is rural in character, very low impact, no noise leaves the site, no odors, no emissions, low height. We reseed the site. We create less traffic post construction than a single house. No significant changes in stormwater patterns, and we have very low impervious surface, typically level of 1 percent. We often develop in areas where work quality is an issue. I work with Deener and the staff to make sure we have responsible plans in place. Within the past three months, we've had solar farms approved very close to Lake Wacama and also in watershed areas in Durham. So we take to heart the green nature of our business. We contribute to the county's tax base without much demand on services. We're not using water, we're not using sewer. The project has been approved by the North Carolina Achilles Commission, which is a state action, which means that prior to such approval, we demonstrated compliance with various potential concerns vetted through the state environmental review clearinghouse. We have several people here answering questions we have, but that's the environment. I look forward to your support.
Fascinated to hear the percentage of impervious surface is determined to be 1 percent, and so help us understand how it is that all those solar panels are not considered impervious.
Okay, well, we have built 45 to 50 solar farms, and many counties and jurisdictions have looked at this. And so North Carolina and Deener has looked at solar farms and solar panels. We build these off the ground. They're typically 30 inches or higher off the ground. The roads are only 15, 20 feet apart. There's gaps in the panels, so when it rains, the water comes down in the gap. And so Deener is the one who's made the ruling, this is not a shed roof, that our construction practices allow for the water to fall. If we had begun to pond, it would disseminate underneath the panels. These posts are pile driven. They're not set in concrete, so we're not putting a piece of concrete in the ground. Our access roads, we put down at considerable expense on logging mats. So when we finish construction, we pick them back up so they can put rest there. And so that's a little bit different than what you see if you drove our solar farm up near our warehouse. Best practices have continued to evolve and become more green in nature. So the only impervious we end up with is the actual width of the post that's not in concrete. And then on the side where we have electrical inburders, which is about 150 square feet per 12 acres, I think, we do a little bit of grading, a little bit of gravel on there to just get the most expensive electrical equipment up and out of the water even if it rain hard. So that's all the impervious we have, and we worked hard to be able to present that to yourself and to other counties.
Great, thank you for that clarification. The other question that I have is, the plans are acknowledging a future thoroughfare that is on our thoroughfare plan, the extension of Charlie Brooks' road. And it is designated as a minor thoroughfare. And there is on your site plan a shaded rectangle in the area called the laydown area. And it is in relatively close proximity to that right of way. And have you considered, well, what is that shaded area? And is it in a position where it's going to be able to survive a fairly major road construction project?
Yeah, so hopefully, we're, at this point, way ahead of you. The laydown area is a temporary construction measure. So it's where we receive the goods, and so we set that on logging mats, and that is not to be a permanent laydown area. It's for construction period. And with your approval, we hope to be under construction very soon, which may hope to be completed construction this year. So hopefully, that's where I said, I think we're way ahead of you on time frames. So that would not be something that's under construction.
What would be the closest permanent feature of your facility relative to that right of way?
Other than the, perhaps, some electrical poles, we have our fences detailed on here.
Yeah, what would be the?
It looks like about 400 feet.
About 400 feet, so there's plenty of people on that road, not disturbing.
I just had a question too. I was curious now, you control the vegetation around the thoroughfare, so does it contribute to your performance?
Well, so we do have to work the agricultural extension offices around the state to find out what kind of grass grows here versus 40 miles down the road. And so we do have landscape crews that cut the grass, reseed the grass, and those type items. One of the reasons why the panels are now 30 inches from the ground instead of 12 to 8 inches is it's easier to maintain, and they also get more sunlight, and so the grass grows underneath. And so again, that's a little improvement in the best practices of our business that is different than what would have been two years ago.
Make a motion that we approve the site plan.
Second.
Before I call for the vote, I'd like for town engineer to comment on Commissioner Biocca's question. That was my only question, too, was the impervious surface question. Seems to me if you build a pole shed, roof is impervious, and this is like several hundred pole sheds. Can our engineer comment on this?
Certainly. I had the same question, so I went and visited their site. They have a solar farm in Willis Square. And what I thought I was going to see, I did find. They do shed water like a barn roof, and they create scour. So I'm working with their engineer to alleviate that, or some details and some drawings. They presented an adequate stormwater plan, so it's going to boil down to details at this point. They're, I'm sorry, they're going to use vegetated soils, green infrastructure, native grass, et cetera. So they're going to meet our ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's a good project. It wouldn't change, if I were voting, it wouldn't change my vote. I think it's a good project, but I think the character relation of it is impervious is sort of disingenuous. I don't know what we lose by, why don't we just put down on the plan so that it's impervious? But if the state has made that determination, I defer to the state of authority. All in favor? All opposed? Opposed, passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is our report with the Craig Lewis of the Ward's Group on the Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Port Commissioners, members of the jury, everyone else present here. First time I've spoken to a jury before, so I do appreciate the opportunity to participate in this very lively conversation. It's been something that folks across the state have been watching, and it's a very opportunistic project. And I think that Pittsburgh really stands at the beginning of some very remarkable things, potentially as a result of this, and so many of the other things that you all are doing in the area. The reality is, is that our world is changing, and we all make choices. These days, we know more than ever that we are not in competition with our next door neighbor. Southern City is not your competition. Your competition is somewhere in China, somewhere in Germany, somewhere in Australia, somewhere in India. You're competing for jobs, you're competing for precious resources, workforce, and people. And all of those things are much different these days than they were 20, 30, 40 years ago. And so it's an interesting opportunity that's placed before you to decide how you want to change, because you can change in many different ways. Communities change and they decline, and some communities change and they grow. The other community changes and stays exactly the same. So you have choices to make. The review process that you put before us in pretty aggressive time schedule, so apologize if we've missed anything. We try to be as comprehensive in our review as possible in the last few weeks. And we've also not had the opportunity to speak with everyone who has potentially an opinion or some evidence, if you will, to express as part of this. We talked to a few folks. A lot of folks contacted us almost immediately after they found out our names and email addresses. And we also reviewed the record that you all have, which is pretty exhaustive, and credit is to you all for keeping up with all that. As you know, our task here is really to present some recommendations with regard to where you are in the Plan Development District Ordinance and Plan Development District Master Plan that's before you today. So there are a number of key considerations that we are looking at as a result of this report. This is a project that is located in an area that has some environmental challenges because it's between the existing community and a water supply watershed area. It's a large project, no doubt about it. One of the largest in North Carolina's history, one of the largest certainly right now in North Carolina, and really, North and South Carolina. By coincidence, I'm heading from here to work with some folks down in Charleston, actually Somerville, South Carolina, who are doing something that would actually dwarf this project. They've got about 80 square miles worth of development that they're looking at right now. So this is a small project in some respects. We know the future development here is going to be limited by the ability to serve it with water and sewer. Sewer is really the number one determinant on development capacity around our country. We still haven't come up with real viable alternatives, although the technologies aren't changing, but we recognize that. Your land use plan, as you know, has said that this is an area that you want development to occur. And you've already kind of put it in print, it's already on maps. You're sort of less clear about what that development looks like, but in fact said, we want development to occur in this area. You've got substantial road infrastructure that you have had planned, largely in correspondence with the land use plan, and as I mentioned, it lies within a very interesting region in this particular wreck of the woods. You know growth is coming. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. And it's coming largely from every direction. It's coming from the Chapel Hill Carver area, it's coming from Wake County, it's coming from Fort Bragg. And really, you all are the center of it. So there is an inevitability about things occurring and changing here. It's about really how you manage that change over time. Now, some general observations that we have with the current ordinance, the current master plan. We do think that there are some significant deficiencies in the master plan. I'll talk about those. But not all of them have to be answered today or at the time of which you adopt it. And I'll talk about that in just a minute. It really does lack a coherent vision. It doesn't really describe what the project is long term. I think that's a very important element. This project, the size of this project, can be well designed, and it can be very complementary to this community and build on it, or it can be a continuation of sprawl. And you really do need to make a decision about that. We have lots of options and alternatives that we can look at around the region of what works and what doesn't. And really, we talk about the phasing of infrastructure, when this project happens, when parts of the project happen. There's an element that we call a development agreement, which I know you all have discussed in some regard. That's really a critical component of this process. So some of the things to think about, I think that the PDD ordinance, PDD ordinance that you have in place today is perfectly adequate. A lot of communities have been using something very similar. A lot of communities use something that's called a conditional district to manage large development projects around the state. They were sort of made legal by the General Assembly back in 2006, 2007, after they had been in practice for probably about 20 years. So what you're doing is perfectly okay. The elements that you're asking for are perfectly normal, and so it is a good tool to use for a project like this. Now, the one thing I'll add is that back in '06, '07, the General Assembly did say that when you are considering a rezoning, which is what this is, your planning board really does need to take a look at it and say, this is consistent with our adopted plans, or it's not consistent with our adopted plans. It's just a statement that they need to make, and sort of recognizing those plans and those elements. Doesn't mean that you all have to abide by it. In fact, the general statute says very explicitly, it doesn't really matter, but it's something that you have to acknowledge and you have to entertain as part of the discussion. I'll talk very briefly about development agreements. I have a little bit of narrative in the report itself about the ins and outs of development agreements here in North Carolina. They're relatively new by statute here in the state, although a number of communities have been using them in a hybrid way or not really telling anyone about it. So it is designed to deal with large scale projects, and it's designed to figure out how we time and phase infrastructure projects. So there are a number of elements that are very important. Most importantly, it's designed to understand how the government and other agencies participate in projects. Sometimes it's a very significant participation. If it's a redevelopment project, oftentimes, there's very significant inputs from the government. Other times, it's simply timing and phasing of projects. But it is a critical component of what you all are looking at. As I mentioned, your 2012 land use plan assumed growth in this area. Interestingly, it didn't assume a lot of growth in a lot of the other areas of the community. And one of the things you might note in my narrative is that I think it's something for you all to think about over time. You have very significant extraterritorial jurisdiction. There doesn't appear to be sewer limitations in some other areas with regard to growth. And I think you need to think about, over time, areas in the south, areas in the west, some of the areas in the north, how growth might occur in that area, because a project like this will infect spur other projects. We've seen projects along this order spur off another 50 percent or more worth of development in the immediate area. So it's something that you all need to be ready for, and I sort of point that out as something to consider, perhaps not now, but in the immediate future. And so as I mentioned, I think you need to take a look at some of the areas in your land use plan to understand the other areas of growth and where that might occur. And more importantly, thinking about how the community becomes centered. Because right now, the development and development potential is certainly eastward leaning. What does that mean for the area in the west? How does this side of town, the center of town currently, interact with future development? So I just, I raise these questions because we've seen these questions raised in other communities. I don't suggest it is in fact a problem. I've seen a number of communities that have two halves, a historic half and a newer half. I started my career in the town of Cornelius, which had a lakeside and an oldside. It grew to about 30,000 people during the period that I've seen it. So it's something you just need to be mindful of more than anything else, and so I think that's really important. The other, I think, to consider in your land use plan is that the road network right now is very north-south and very perimeter oriented, circumstantial, as we say. Where are the things that help to connect back to the existing community, help to connect to the old town? Think about the east-west connections over time. I think that will be critically important, and just sort of add to the fine grained network of streets. It doesn't mean that you're adding big roads to get east-west, it's connecting the existing two lane roads and making all those things happen. And then the other thing I'll just point out is that, one thing I didn't mention in my report, but I think it's important to sort of bring it up, is how does this connect to the regional transit in the regional area? Because I think what we've learned, you know, we're in the Charlotte region, we're all here in the Triangle region, we both made some significant mistakes about how we cite and serve large employment centers. And the reality is, is in some of these places, we simply, there's not enough money to go back and fix them. So we need to be thinking about those things in a regional way, about how they get served over the long term. You know, think about RTP, if it was originally envisioned to be served with a transit system 30 or 40 years ago, how it might have arranged itself, how it might function today, better function today for a transportation system. Again, we've heard determined, there's just not enough money to do that. And so we have these opportunities to make some decisions about that, because we're early enough in the process, and this is a significant project. Your plan, I think, needs to better illustrate your vision. There's some good elements in your land use plan today, but you need to get in and sort of dig into some of the areas where you want things to occur and what you want it to look like. So you can do that with illustrations, you can do with precedent imagery, you can do with diagrams, different elements, but I think all those things are important over time. So it really sort of sets the stage for these, this project and all those other projects that I mentioned. It will come. You know, rezonings are going to start to occur after this one occurs. People are going to start to jockey for position, start to entitle land, start to try to establish value over time. So the master plan, what you've got before you, when it all boils down to it, it's got three basic components. It's got the total development capacity, it's got the development standards and expectations, and the process by which you start releasing permits. That's it. Three basic things, 7,000 acres, no problem, very easy. We recognize that even a map that's presented at this scale is almost useless to sort of provide that vision. There's nothing you can do about it, it's just the scale of the development. Certainly, it shows some regional roads, very, very large roads, but it's still too big to show all the small roads. There'd be a lot of small roads to service this development. So all that's very important. But one thing I think that's critical is that you know that your PDD ordinance really expects excellence. What it's saying is, you can essentially create your own zoning ordinance outside of the bounds of the existing standards if you are very interested in doing something that's innovative, something that's creative, something that has an element of excellence about it. You need to establish what those elements are as part of that. The current vision statement, I think, probably needs a little bit of work to try to explain The current vision statement, I think, probably needs a little bit of work, to try to explain what that means and how that gets cast over time. I think that's perhaps one of the most critical pieces to the current master plan. And so I think things, including imagery, precedents, best practices, I've seen some of those floating around in the public record, but not included as part of the final PDD master plan. I've seen some things on websites. I think all very important, to help tell the story, and relay that information to not just this developer, master developer, but to the people that will be buying tracts and maybe being sub-developers or builders that are part of it. All those elements are very important. In fact, we found, I think, a piece of, an interesting, well-written piece of the vision on one of the development partners' websites, and some imagery that I think some of you all have seen already. And I think it starts to cast it a little bit differently than as if I were reading it from scratch, in terms of better understanding it. That they are looking to try to achieve something that is different and unique in this region. They're looking for walkable, human-scale villages and walkable neighborhoods, and interaction with the nature that's in this area. None of that, unfortunately, gets conveyed as part of the ordinance, so none of the thing gets conveyed to the development expectations down the line. So I think all those things are important, all entirely fixable. Just examples of things that we've seen in imagery that we've seen, I think, that cast a very interesting and compelling vision for what makes us unique, and how to make this a little bit different over time. They talk about the natural settings, the integration of the elements of living in a village, and the organic growth that occurs as a result of that. You have decisions to make, and when, sort of, in absence of those visions, those imagery, we're sort of left to our own devices to see what things can happen. And I think, you know, we look and understand that we have made decisions that don't necessarily benefit the greater communities over time. We can look at, you know, a half a million square feet of big-box retail over time, and sort of the net impacts financially that that provides to a particular community, and the traffic impacts as well. We know what small-town impacts are for a revenue standpoint, and successful small-towns, and how all those pull together. We know what a vibrant urban center is, with great walkable streets and mixed-use, multi-story buildings, and all those elements that get pulled together, and the potential revenue yields from that, and how that then returns. Now, I have every expectation that the project's going to look somewhere between small-town and with the picture of downtown Asheville, but it's a matter of what gets you there, and how that vision gets translated to each individual subdivision plan and site plan moving forward. From the site analysis and the elements of the site analysis, I think the southwest-shore conservation assessment that was done a number of years ago, it's a very good report. There's some good science in it, there's some very strong, well-informed suggestions that are in there, that should serve as a good measuring stick to help set that innovative excellence that the PDD ordinance expects. So I think that's a critical component that should be very strongly considered as part of this application. And from a land use element standpoint, 22,000 housing units sounds like a very big number, and there's no doubt about it, that's a big number. But when we break it down, it's three units an acre. And most of Wake County was built out of three units an acre. Most of Metamor County was built out of three units an acre. Not downtown Charlotte, a county. This is predominant zoning that's been out there, it's built most of our suburban areas. There is a hat that I would wear that would say, actually, I'm a little concerned that that density is so low. But I think that some of the other things that I'm going to talk about in just a few minutes, and the fact that it's not going to be spread across evenly at three units per acre throughout the entire development, that there clearly would have to be clusters of development that makes it more walkable and more cohesive, I think you have opportunities. And what does that look like? Well, you all can drive just a little bit to the northeast and see Southern Village. It's got almost 20 years' worth of growth under its belt, and you can see what three units an acre looks like in a very walkable way. So certainly a good precedent to take a look at. Metamor, another more recent example also, about three units an acre. But it doesn't really feel like three units an acre like we see in suburban Wake County, for example. So many are much different, much different configuration. So again, I think, you know, imagery and precedents in sort of establishing these types of centers, I, in my mind, I can see what that means. I think it's not an unduly reached. Question is, I think, the bigger number is 22 million square feet of non-residential development. Not coincidence, perhaps. RTP is about 22 million square feet of non-residential development today. They're looking to intensify a little bit of that, and we're going to remove some of it and add some of it. But that's what that looks like in a very suburban format, low-slung buildings across the landscape, across 7,000 acres. South Park, the Charlotte area, is about 5 million square feet. It's one of the largest sub-markets in the state. Downtown Durham, 3.2 million. The Carys sub-market, which is everything outside of RTP, is about 5.7 million square feet, spread across a fairly large area. Big numbers. I think, you know, one of the things that, over time, we recognize that this is a long-term build-out. RTP is a 35-, 40-year build-out. There's been some references to Reston. Reston has been a 40-year build-out. They just built their town center for the last decade in large respect. So there are a lot of things that are going to happen over a long period of time. Anyone that's concerned that 4 million square feet is just going to show up on the front door, well, that would be counted pretty much every market force that's out there today. Charlotte absorbed about 600,000 square feet of office development in the last year and a half. So even in good times, there's a long process for build-out of this. But it can look many different ways. It can look like this, where the multi-story, mixed-use buildings are integrated with natural elements. It can look like some of these pictures, again, three- or four-story buildings, mixed-use buildings. Or it can look like this. And there's nothing in the current ordinance that, as it's set up today, and the master plan as it's set up today, that differentiates between those two, as a development vision, development model. I think that's really important, because these elements clearly have much different impacts over time. And I think there's better opportunities. And again, from what I've seen, the development team really is looking to do better over time. It's just, how do we get that prescribed into the master plan so that things can be moved forward? And there are a couple other elements in the land use section we recommend. I think standards of imagery are really important. The table of uses that you all have today, I've got to be honest, you know, it's as bad as I've seen, but I've seen a lot of bad ones. And it's just something you all have had for a really long time. It's time for an update of that anyway. So the fact that you're forcing them to use that same table is just, must be penitential for them. So, you know, I think we need to take a look at how all that stuff gets pulled together, and really recommending to the development team to look at a regulating plan that helps provide a little bit more certainty about where things are going in a smaller scale. Again, difficult to do at the scale of maps that you're looking at and using today, but as they get in more deeper and more complex elements of the projects, they can look at how all those things get put together. Because again, essentially what we're looking at is, the PDD ordinance is a replacement zoning ordinance. Exempt a number of things out, and establish their own sets of standards. With regard to utilities, I think, you know, a lot of utility elements are going to be left up to the development agreement, when capacity is made available and who pays for that capacity. One thing I'll recommend is, I wouldn't create new standards for this development. I'd recommend a good set of high standards, which you have recently adopted, be applied across the entire jurisdiction. It'll make development a whole lot easier, so that one, you know, stream buffering detail or bio-retention areas, when you cross over one property boundary, doesn't become something different. It's expected anything would be the case like that, but we need to make sure that's all nailed down. With regard to other public services, I think there are two critical ones. In most communities like yours, it's fire and it's schools. Those are the two things that are most directly impacted by new development and housing development. And I think this PDD master plan needs to recognize those elements and integrate sort of how those get played into the overall development process. It's one of those that's sort of almost there, but not quite. And really establishing some basic thresholds for acreage, general location, and accessibility. You know, again, I don't expect that the schools that would be provided as a part of this would be on really crummy land, on the back end of a really crummy road for someone else to fix, but we do want to make sure that that all gets laid out, because things can change over time. And then the construction details, who builds it and when, get nailed down in the development agreement. So not something we have to deal with today. The transportation element, as I mentioned earlier, I think adding a few more east-west connections, perhaps starting with your thoroughfare plan, and maybe building on potentially some elements that get incorporated as part of that. You know, there's just, with that level of development, there's just going to be people everywhere. But that can very much be a good thing. I think it can be a very good thing for your downtown, the historic downtown, the character that it has. Love to see all the places that offer lunch and dinner full every day. And the way they do that is, they make it easy for people to get there. We have a benefit, my town, Davidson, North Carolina, we've got a number of great restaurants that are there. We have Lowe's corporate headquarters that is five miles up the road. And we see a lot of Lowe's corporate headquarters tags at lunchtime in downtown because of the character that it provides, and people recognize that and they want to be there. So there's great benefit and great blessing that comes from this kind of development. We talked about transportation, getting down to the details. You know, the master plan has a few big roads, but with that level of development, we know that there's a much finer-grained network of streets that will have to be provided. We want to sort of nail that down today. What are the expectations for that, to be able to do that? And we're really recommending a much tighter network of intersections, and things like reducing the length of cul-de-sacs and other elements that really factor into providing a more robust transportation system, more than just dependency on a few major roads. Why is that important? Because we recognize that the old model, which is represented by the diagrams in the top, have failed us. The older model and the newer model that we're using, it's a much more efficient way to get people around and provide people with choice of how they move around their communities. With regard to open space, I think, a number of conversations with regards to that. There's certainly a lot of overlap that occurs between the environmental elements in this area and just the provision of usable open space. We recommend setting some kind of goal. You know, in our report, we said, let's strive for 40% of open space. Is that the right number? I'm not sure. Maybe it's 30%, maybe it's somewhere in between. But we thought it's a good goal to strive for, try to achieve a lot of the things that people are concerned about, but also just for downright efficiency. I think the developer's not really interested in spreading infrastructure all over the countryside either, and they recognize that the more compact that they can develop, the better for them as well. And so I think there's opportunities for that. Maybe one of those goals is that 30% of the land is largely in undisturbed open space. Now, I don't know what the percentages are. It's a bit of a swag. I sort of did a visual estimate of all the steep slope areas, all the stream buffers, all the natural heritage areas, all the, everything that, something got mapped somewhere, and we just overlaid it and said, I don't know, what does that look like? It seemed like it was in the 25% to 30% range. But I'm sure that there are a lot of smart people with lots of sophisticated GIS modeling that can give me an exact number. That's what I call low-hanging fruit. It's the stuff that we easily sort of take off the development table and start. The more, obviously, we can get in larger tracts, the better. It's better for wildlife, it's better for impervious surface, it's better for all kinds of things. So I think all that's critically important. Then we calculate another formula, which is about 10% in active park space. We used your draft parts master plan and standards that they have developed, based on state and national standards, to develop what that means, and the various specific elements of active parks, ballfields, playgrounds, and all of the like. I think all those things get put into that mix. With regard to other development standards, you know, one of the questions about not allowing or not permitting, or I should say, allowing for unlimited height all throughout, is one of those that, you know, in some areas, allowing for a little bit of height makes a lot of sense. And there's going to be a market element that's going to dictate some of that. But I think that, at this point, my guess is, we can probably nail that down. I think, in terms of anything that goes above three or four stories, we can probably start with the activity centers that have been identified as part of that. And my guess is, we might even be able to draw a boundary over a certain other chunk of it, but that the remaining portion of it can certainly develop at what is largely village and town-scale development at three or four stories. You know, it's amazing how much density you can get at just three to four stories all throughout. So you might get an occasional tower. Generally speaking, I think that because of the way building efficiencies run, probably not going to be more than five stories, because then you start getting into more expensive construction techniques, and you start getting into a lot of structured parking, which is going to be very costly these days. So we recommend four stories. Let's start there. I think that that can probably handle an awful lot of what we talked about, maybe with some exemptions. There's a recommendation about exempting them from the major transportation corridor overlay. I'm not going to comment as to whether the transportation overlay is a good or a bad thing, but having a gap in it for a certain period of time, and not thinking about how it impacts the other elements of the corridor, I think that's something you want to just talk out. I would try to get some semblance of consistency through that corridor, being able to do that. And as I mentioned earlier, having a maximum cul-de-sac like the 500 feet, more connected development all throughout. There's some additional elements that were discussed, and I tried to boil things down to the things I felt were most important to discuss. I mean, there are a lot of things that were thrown in, you know, signage plan, landscaping plans. Those things happen at the site level, and as individual projects come in. But they can step back and at a design guideline level, say, we're going to use these types of trees in these streets, and these types of trees in these streets, and generally we'd like ground planting here, and this type of lighting fixture. They can step back and provide some high-level guidance to the overall development in a set of design guidelines. We think that with regard to these additional elements and how they get done, there's two buckets. One is, on the development side, things that they have to work out and make commitments to. We think that that's, things like public art, we need something to sort of hang our hats on. Not just saying they're making commitments to public art, what does that mean? A lot of communities are, from a public standpoint standpoint, contribute 1% of the construction budget to public art. That may or may not be an appropriate number, because usually that 1% is public buildings and infrastructure. When you get in private development, those numbers ratchet up pretty quickly, and that may be frankly an excessive number. But let's start with something. Baseline goals for providing affordable housing, 8 percentage. Let's start there. Try to nail that down. As I mentioned, having design guidelines, critically important. But there are some other things that are really town, or town-in partnership with the developer and other developers, frankly, responsibility. Getting a new unified development ordinance, land management ordinances, call whatever you want. You're really long overdue for an update, but you are thankfully at the bleeding edge, if you will, of needing them. So you're not right in the middle of things. We just rewrote Wake Forest ordinances last year, and they were pretty much right in the middle of things. They missed a lot of opportunities in the last few years, but they still have some opportunities to come up. Affordable housing is not something that is limited to this development. Some of the best opportunities you have for affordable housing are in your existing housing stock today. How do you deal with that? Who's going to help provide and ensure that level of affordability? Who's going to pre-qualify people? That's a very complex thing, but I would not, I would not make a contingency requirement on this particular developer to figure out. That's a community-wide issue, be a community-wide response to that. Transit, another community-wide issue, public art, as I mentioned, and things like financial impact analysis. How do you create the methodology to set that up? Because I think with this project, with each small area that they talk about, and evaluating the fiscal impact of that, you're going to have other projects that will come in that will be not, that will not be part of this master plan, that will not be... will be not, that will not be part of this master plan, that will not be run by this master developer, it'll be somebody else. And they should probably follow those same rules as well. So you need to have a good methodology set up to be able to do that. So the need for a new UDO is really yesterday. Thank goodness you've got a few more weeks. Maybe you can get it done by, let's say, the end of March. You might be in good shape. You're still really ahead of things, so that's the good news with all that. But you need to get moving on that. Your UDO's vision should be well illustrated, just like this master plan should be. It should be, clearly articulate what you want things to be. The design guidelines that I've mentioned, we've consolidated a lot of those additional elements under the heading of a design guideline, so it's really under one cover. And we think that there are two phases that can be delivered as part of this. There's sort of a phase one, it's a big picture, and there's a phase two when things get refined over time. And so what does phase one look like? One of the, the current master plan draft has some element of development that would be permitted to go ahead without any additional submissions of any kind. Maybe there's some element of submission that's fairly low. Those thresholds are pretty high. At 15%, those are pretty big numbers, which is where it's set today. Even at 5%, you're talking about over a million square feet of non-residential development over the next year and a half, two years. That's a lot of absorption to be able to manage, and I think there's probably nothing wrong with that. But there's some steps that I think we can get in place that take care of a lot of some of the other concerns that are out there to deal with it. Now, I'm going to recommend that these projects, whatever goes forward, has some element of a small area plan. Now, we've got it broken down into basically a phase one small area plan and a phase two small area plan. The phase one has lower restrictions, lower thresholds. Some of those other elements we talked about, figuring out the affordable housing nut, that's going to take a while. The community that I've been working, we've been doing it for 25 years, still haven't completely figured it out, but we're getting there. And maybe you can learn faster than we did. So all those elements are very important, but it's going to take some time, public dialogue and negotiations with lots of folks. But today, you require that all of your subdivisions and site plans, as we just witnessed, come before you all. So there's an element of a small area plan to what you already have in place today. So we're asking for that piece to continue to go forward. Maybe it's a little bit picture, bigger picture, there's some details that we've included as part of our recommendations of what should be included, but we don't think they're onerous in any way. In some ways, they're actually making things a little bit easier because they don't have to bring the fully engineered set of drawings to you for every subdivision plan and every site plan, once they get sort of that big picture sketch plan approved. And I think that's the goal long-term, for you to be able to do this as well. You establish the parameters for what you're looking for and everything else is just a technical exercise that you're very confident staff can review and approve, just making sure that they've checked all the boxes down, the things that they were committing to with previous exercises. So we think there's a great opportunity to be able to do that with fair, not that much pain and a very normal process. Any other community around the state is going to have some element of process to release a million square feet of something, or a thousand homes somewhere. So very normal process. We've outlined what that looks like in the narrative. You have sort of this phase one of what to do, while other things are being worked on in parallel with the phase two or the ultimate planning process. It provided to you all an opportunity, a path, to be able to start moving some things forward and provide market opportunities for the developer to be able to sell property and get some other things in the pipeline, but then start to work on those other things as well, basically in parallel, to be able to do that. And again, all these things are very normal parts of the development process anywhere else in the state. Last thing to share with you all is a schedule, because I think all the things that I presented to you all this evening are not particularly onerous with regard to time. My guess is that based on some of the things that I've seen, the development team has prepared a lot of these things already, or has got a roughed-out sketch of what a lot of these things are going to look like. And so being able to integrate those things in shouldn't take a significant amount of time to be able to wrap up this phase of the effort. So we see the sort of approval of the master plan occurring in very short order, really subject to being, to provide some of these additional details, which I think are all very achievable. Working on design guidelines, as I mentioned, there's a phase one, being able to include things, and then there's the ultimate set of what design guidelines look like over time. Those additional elements, you know, two years is a long time for anything. I think you can get it done sooner. I think a lot of these things, with the exception of affordable housing, I think you can probably knock out in the next year, if not sooner. Affordable housing is just a very complex issue, so I think that's the only one that I would sort of pull out as being a little bit harder to deal with. And so I think, you know, by second quarter of next year, which is April, May, June, being able to release some other larger areas for development, subject to some of these small area plans and some of those other development provisions, it's a very realistic schedule to be able to do that. So obviously, a lot of partnerships and working together to make those things happen are very important. Now, you also have some additional work, you know, homework to do, which you already know, which is getting your land management ordinances in place, because the moment you start to adopt this, other people are going to knock on the door asking for rezoning applications on other parcels of property. So you want to have your zoning map and zoning ordinance in place to be able to deal with that. You know, that's a process that should take you about somewhere between 18 months and two years, but that's ultimately up to you all. We just finished a project for Wilson not too long ago, about 35, 30,000 people. You know, it took us about 18 months. So it's a very doable opportunity to be able to move all those things forward. You can get it done faster, although I haven't seen it done much faster than, these things just take time over time. So that's a summation of some of the recommendations that we have put before you. I think there's a little bit for everyone in there, if you will. There's some things that, sort of, everyone's got a little bit of homework that they're leaving with as a part of that. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board who would like to refer.
Well, I'll, I'll say that thank you for your presentation and I think a very good report, so thank you. I was very pleased to see many of your recommendations in the report. I think that when we first received the master plan on May 1, we recognized deficiencies as well. And staff and the board worked hard to make comment back to the developer and get to the point where, as of November or whatever, 22nd, there's a substantially different master plan on the table. And it is due to many of the same ideas that this is such an enormous scope. You can't get to the details right now. You can't do it. But what you need to put in place are those things that will assure that you get those details. And it goes from 30,000 square, 30,000 feet, looking at this master plan, down to small area plans, down to site plans and subdivision plans that reflect back on the previous version or step, which is vision from the master plan, a granular vision of small area plan and very specific design at site plan and subdivision. And so it was very good to hear you say that that is a workable process. We think it is too. We also have concluded that perhaps our ordinances aren't stellar, not going to produce the type of...
You're not alone.
Yeah. No, I know, we're not. And so, you know, the concept was and is in this master plan, that in this two-year timeframe, when the additional elements are being worked on, which I also think of as the design guidelines which you refer, while the developer and the town are working on those, there are, the same process is going on to codify the good ideas into a unified development ordinance throughout the town. So we, I think, have structured the master plan in a way that says, yes, we're going to do both of these things at the same time. You're going to have very good ideas that we're going to adopt, and we're going to have very good ideas that you're going to adopt. And together, because quite frankly, there is a substantial development here and they are going to be the town, and therefore, we need to make sure that the regulations that the town invokes through a UDO apply to them, and the very good ideas that they plan to put into their development, we can include in our UDO. So I am very happy with that. The thing that I think I'm most interested in, which causes me pause to hear you say, and I think you're saying this, so correct me if I'm wrong, absolutely no development occurs on this project without a small area plan being defined. Is, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
But I do have to make sure that that's qualified.
Yeah.
Because today, as, you know, as was evidenced by the previous application, we have a plan that's coming forward to you that you're approving.
You mean by that a site plan?
That site plan, right. So site and subdivision plans are a plan, and they are a small area plan in some ways. You're going from, you know, the sort of high level 30,000 to that construction documents piece in absence of any kind of interim step. I'm just suggesting that it's very normal to have a subdivision sketch plan that has all the details that I've got listed, which are particularly onerous or unusual, that that comes before you all. And perhaps it includes a little bit larger area than they're ready to do development on or not. But again, I don't consider that to be significant. I consider that to be part of your normal process today, and they're going to do it anyway. They're going to figure out a master plan, figure out how to sell those lots, and then they'll come in and start to plan it.
Right. And so that's the granular site plan and subdivision plan. And the way I understand our master plan is, prior to their ability to develop any of the 27 sections that they've identified in their project, prior to their ability to exceed 15% of that density within either or any, they have to create an entire small area plan for the entire section. So there's really 30,000, and there is some grand number, up to 5% and 15% as it is now. I know you're recommending five and five numbers. Yeah, that's right. But the master plan does require that mid-step. It says 30,000, develop your additional elements, they are guidelines. Now, tell us what you're going to do in this particular area before you go too far in that area. And then that will be the basis upon which all subsequent site plans and subdivision plans must adhere. So I think we have in the, I think there, in this master plan, those ideas that you're expressing are included.
Yes, and I think the, the thing that I wanted to make...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The point I wanted to make was, the difference that I, that this master plan has is it does allow some development to occur immediately, right? And I think, as you just mentioned, Charlotte got 600,000 square feet of commercial or non-residential, if you will, in the last year and a half. This town has not seen much development in the last year and a half, two years. Not many places have seen a lot of development in the last five years. And I think we see the economy turning. I see the economy turning. I see my business picking up. And I want us to take full advantage of this opportunity. And I don't want to say to a developer, "Our ordinances aren't ready for you, sit tight and wait till we're ready." What I want to do is move forward, trying to do both at the same time, knowing that there are restrictions and natural governors on the ability to get out of shape. You mentioned at the very beginning, water and sewer. We have only a very small amount of water and sewer that we can provide to any development. So that's going to severely restrict the ability for it to get out of hand, prior to having these regulations overlaid in the next two years. So from my perspective, what I would like to do is allow the development community to utilize our antiquated regulations, and while the next two years, we're working to update those, with some very good thinking from a pretty talented developer and planning organization with our community in developing the vision for what Pittsburgh wants to be. But at the same time, not saying, not putting more authority on all development and saying, "We can't handle it, we're not ready." So that's the point I wanted to make was, I think the way the master plan is now, adopts many, or includes many of your strategy ideas, but also takes it another perspective, not only simply from sound planning, land planning, but we've got to concern ourselves also with real economic development issues that this town and this county have been trying to overcome for quite some time. And this is a really good opportunity, and if we can partner with this developer, we can create those regulations that made for this town in the same time that we're allowing them to make some progress in including, increasing tax base and not saying to the rest of the development community, "Go away, we don't want you."
I don't disagree with any of that. I'm just saying, I think there's, what I've outlined is not shutting down the development. I think that that's part of the issue, is what's the path to be able to say, okay, once you approve this rezoning, when can they start pulling building permits? How do we do that, sort of in absence of this lower level? Because I think there are different reins to be able to do that. Again, in my mind, and maybe I haven't articulated it very clearly, I think that there's, there's a very easy path, it's not too difficult, that I've outlined in here, in terms of the details that would be necessary for each site plan or subdivision plan. And that's really all they are. Doesn't compel them to figure out the affordable housing code, figure out the public art or some of the transit issues or some of the other big picture. Those things are not necessary right now, because they'll have to be figured out later if we're able to release development today, as if it were a straight rezoning to C2 or whatever the thing is. That's the path that they'd go. I mean, today, if you rezoned a piece of property to C, I'll say C2, it's just an example, it's still, would have to go through a site or subdivision plan process. So this is not unusual for them. The only thing that we're suggesting is what a lot of communities are doing, is rather than waiting until they're almost done with construction drawings and then bringing those through the process, that they can actually take an interim step, bring them through, get approved, and then they go forward without, they get to save more time that they normally would spend it three or four months worth of a process, looking at construction details, which aren't as important as the bigger picture issues. So I think all those things are achievable and a lot of communities are moving in that direction anyway. And getting rid of the technical engineering pieces out of the, out of, you know, sort of the board review, and getting it into the hands of the technicians, the building permit technicians, the engineers, letting them review, makes sure all that stuff is taken care of.
Okay. I'm detecting perhaps a miscommunication or misunderstanding, using the same words.
Yes.
When I think of a small area plan, I think of it as one of the sections that is 240 acres, 380 acres, 475 acres in their plan, as a small area plan. I'm, and I would use the word site plan and subdivision plan as the specific project. And I, am I detecting that you're referring to those site plans and subdivision plans also as small area plans?
They can very easily be.
Okay.
I mean, the normal process for any of those is, there's a schematic phase, which may be bigger picture.
Right.
That's done by the engineering firm, the planning firm, until they determine whether it's financially feasible. Until they determine whether it's financially feasible, they figure out square footage is, basic arrangements, street layouts, lumber of lots. We do these things all the time for our clients. And when they say, "Okay, we think we've got the number, go," then it gets turned over to the engineer to work out water, sewer, storm, you know, all the expensive engineering stuff. So it doesn't have to be big, and there's nowhere right now that defines what a small area plan size needs to be today.
Well, in the master plan now, it does say that it will be on these sections, but... So I'm more comfortable with what you're saying because I think you're adding a new wrinkle to our just land development review process. Right now, it is a site plan that comes to us, it's not full of construction drawing because it still will go back to the engineering department. But basic zoning compliance issues, buffers, parking layout, building square footage, lighting, that kind of thing. And it doesn't always, it doesn't always rise to the level of construction level document. Thank you.
I have a question related to that. One of the issues that's here to me is making sure we set aside natural areas not only to make us stand out from Apex and Kerry and the other places we get to learn from their mistakes, and also we have such pristine, some important natural areas here. And also, I do believe that we'll benefit the developer, I feel, that people will really be drawn to Chatham Park because of the natural elements. But with that said, at what point do we set aside the natural areas? If we allow building to begin, then who's, what's to stop them from building on areas that we later wish we had protected? And I just, things like that piece should be, should happen before we approve the zoning. And I just wonder what they thought about that.
Yeah, I did mention with regard to the open space planning that I think that you can set some percentages and thresholds early in this process.
Can they be approved?
Yeah, I mean, as part of this P D D master plan, to be able to do that. And you may miss a few things. You're going to get the, what I call the low hanging fruit. You're going to get the stream buffers and the things that are sort of listed. And you can list deep slopes that are in there, 20% or more. There's lots of different things you can include that are part of that calculation that then would get either resolved or rectified when you look at other areas. I mean, ultimately, they do have to look at the big picture of how all the open space networks get tied together. That's, that's something that needs to happen sooner rather than later. And again, I think that that's something that can be done fairly easily. We do that all the time as part of the master planning work we do for communities. First thing we set, we'll look at all the G I S layers and we can pull that information out and give you what that percentage might be, it's just a raw calculation. So we can get those numbers in there, start there, and then you reconcile it later on. I mean, the percentages that I'm talking about relative to the overall development are not, they're significant, but I think if you keep it clustered, which my guess is they're probably going to want to, they're going to want to keep it near major infrastructure today, start with those current bases, so I'm less concerned about intruding into the tougher areas.
I just have one other question, this may be to you, like you even asked this question, but I noticed in your report that you talked about some other options besides P D D. You talked about the traditional neighborhood development and the continental district process. And I just wondered, all right, if you were doing this, in your opinion, would the town prefer a bit more of one of those than this then, P D D?
Well, you know, you're sort of in the middle of it now, so it's like saying, you know, we're not pregnant anymore, let's try it differently this time. The conditional district as a tool is virtually identical, excuse me. So it, there's really no difference. I sort of point that out because that's really the legal underpinning of what gives you the authority to do P D Ds here in this community. The traditional neighborhood development ordinance is something that we use in a couple of different communities. We did it recently for Wake Forest. That's a good tool for a smaller area, but does break down when you look at a very large area because you tend to get multiple neighborhoods.
I was really thinking, not necessarily for Chatham Park, but for some of the surrounding land that's going to develop, we might want to look at some of these other ways.
I would encourage that.
Would that be a good idea?
Yes.
I have a quick question about your scheduling slide, if you could, I can hardly see that.
I can't see that, can you?
If anything, if you could comment on that just a little bit more.
Yes. So the, hold the hand if we can. So sort of following it by quarters, 2000, the first quarter, 2014 here. So we're in the middle of first quarter. So in terms of sort of completing the master plan, the things that I've recommended, the additions to the current master plan, I think are achievable in the next 30 to 60, 90 days at the most to be able to complete. I say that because, again, from experience that we've had, working for our clients, to be able to produce that information, I think that's a relatively achievable timeline, which gets them their first approvals sometime in the next quarter. And again, that's six to 12 weeks. That schedule's up to you all ultimately with regard to that. Design guidelines can certainly be started right now, they've got a great team, they're part of that, who do this work all the time, and I guess they can probably pull half of it off the shelf and modify it, change the tree types so they're appropriate for the area, look for different lighting, and get going. At least on sort of these initial pieces, or give it some structure. And that gets you to potentially in the third quarter fall of being able to start off the first phase of development approvals and getting some actual entitlements in place so they can start moving dirt. Ultimately, there's a lot of other schedules that are in there, there's a market schedule, there is the construction drawing schedule to get you there, but that is potential over the next six months to be able to start to release development opportunities. And, you know, if you go through a rezoning process, it's not six months later to be able to start turning dirt is actually a pretty normal schedule. We're working on those additional elements that we talked about and the more robust design guidelines over that sort of next year. I think there are things that are going to be done fairly quickly and can be done fairly quickly. I think there's some things that are going to take a little bit longer. I've identified what those are already. Also, in the background, you all are working on the development agreement, which I think is probably the hardest thing of anything that you might work on. You might make the affordable housing thing look easy because there's a lot of moving parts for something that large, especially when you're, you know, you're talking about schools and fire stations and sewer capacity, and when the plant gets built and ready, and who gets a lot of development, and who pays for what. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of attorneys are going to have to pay very well to cash that one out. It's just a normal way that those things go. And so that you can start to talk about potentially mid-point of next year of getting a lot of these things done. And I think it's entirely possible to have in the next year and a half, most of these things taken care of. And you may decide that you're far enough along on most of those issues that you may come back and amend the P D D master plan and say, yeah, we've, we've got a separate agreement that we're working on to finish off, all these affordable housing is that example. Once we get that done, you know, that's fine, we'll take care of that at that point. But everything else can be released and moved forward. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold everything up to the very end until everything is done. I think there's a point in some of these things you should move that forward. And then that bottom part really is how normal U D O, new development ordinances would schedule out and working on those things over about the next year, year and a half. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts with that as well. It's actually easier to work with a one single master developer than it is to work with the other 400 property owners that are going to want to possibly do something, so it's going to take a little bit of time on that. Did submit a copy of this to Brian earlier in the day, so he'll get you a nice fresh copy as part of this.
Let me go ahead and, I've got a few things here, some of them have already been covered, but I'll go over the ones that have not. In your cover memo, you responded to a question about adding a utility plan, electric, gas, and communications such as broadband, television, cable, that sort of thing, and saying that you didn't think that was necessary as part of zoning application. I was the one that asked that question, my concern was that all these utilities are going to require expensive easements and space for electrical substations and natural gas substations and other sorts of things that will impact, you know, where you can put buildings and whatnot. So if not now, at what point would it be prudent to require coordination with the major utilities and inclusion of them, so we can see their easements and see their physical facilities that are going to be on the ground?
Right. So in terms of understanding how that fits in with the development process, I think that's a conversation that you all, in particular your town staff, has with those many utilities. We might be adding another one with Google coming to the area. And understanding what their potential impacts, as you mentioned, in utility easements and switching boxes and all that kind of stuff that's out there. I consider that sort of the marginal, it's very site-based. Most of their regional facilities are actually rather small, and they're fairly easy to be able to deliver services. And all of them are done by, you know, folks that are very reactionary by their nature. They don't tend to extend their utilities to sort of in advance of development. They just wait until it gets done and then they run it.
Okay.
They can do it fairly quickly.
Moving to another point, from page six of your report, you said that the P D D ordinance is more than adequate as an enabling ordinance to address development at many scales from 100 acres to 7,000 acres. Despite the recent evolution of the flexible tools, we find no need to make any specific changes to the P D D ordinance itself, except your statement. But in other places in your report, you made some suggestions where there were weaknesses in the P D D, and I'd like to point those out and see why you don't think we should change it while we have the opportunity. On page five of the cover letter, you stated that the exemption of a P D D master plan from traffic impact analysis is a rather unique amongst pure ordinances. So should we consider, reconsider this provision of the P D ordinance before proceeding to take action on the rezoning?
Yeah, because it was less of a concern for me when, in reading through the master plan, that actually had been put back in. So for right now, I don't consider that to be a concern, although that would be something you probably want to take a look at in the future.
And there was a place on page eight in the cover letter, you agreed that the P D ordinance should be clarified with respect to the requirement that all parcels in a P D D be contiguous. That's a small change, I don't know whether we'd like to do that.
Yeah.
And then there's another provision of, I think, that's particularly problematic. When you look at our P D D ordinance, in paragraph 5.8.3, the ordinance says, "Submittal of an application to rezone property to a P D D shall include submission of a planned development district master plan. The P D D and the P D D master plan shall be treated as a single item when acted upon by the board commissioners." It seems to me that we've sort of handcuffed ourselves from the ability to approve the P D D rezoning until we're fully satisfied with the P D D master plan by linking them so tightly. So what would be the downside of separating this into two board actions so that if we wanted it, we could approve the rezoning indicating our agreement in principle with the overall concept, followed by a separate action later after all this work is done to approve the P D D master plan?
You have effectively done that with the way that the master, this master plan is constructed today, where you have the bigger picture issues get incorporated as part of this rezoning, the conditions of the rezoning. And some of those conditions may mean that there's future work to be done. Again, that's very common, there are performance standards to be able to achieve at some point to deal with the high-level issues so that each site plan comes in as measured against those pieces. So I don't know that you have to physically break it apart, I don't think that's necessary to do that. I think your, the way that you've got it constructed, and the way that the master plan is written today, and then the subsequent development agreement that will occur, which you can do on your own, you don't need enabling legislation for that, those, that will take care of all of those issues.
I just, I'd read that ordinance as being very specific that when we approve the master plan, we currently approve facility, they're sort of mixed for the P type, you know?
Oh, they are. Yes, there's no doubt about it. I mean, you are rezoning this property.
Yes.
And you're rezoning this property with these conditions attached to it, and these conditions are the master plan and all the details. So that's, that's the mechanics of that, it's a one-step process.
I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding how we can do that if we're going on record that there's major holes in the master plan that need to be fixed, and we're not ready for that. If we wanted to, let's say, demonstrate our general support for the concept as a concept that this development is going to go forward, it seems to me we should decouple those in the ordinance so that we could rezone subsequently, the work that you talked about to get the master plan working to be before we do a small area plan and approve it and order the, give the developer permission to, you know, dig this first spade and dirt, so I don't know. As a board, go up and decide.
I just want to be clear, you're saying you're talking about making the rezoning, skipping that separate piece of the agreement for the details, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying a ordinance doesn't leave us much latitude right now. It says you have to work out all the details before you, it says approval of the master plan and approval of the zoning are one and the same thing. So if you're, if you're not happy with the master plan, suggests that you can't proceed to approve every development.
The ordinance is not specific as to the detail that's required of the master plan. It doesn't say things need to be drawn at 100 to 200, it doesn't say that you've got to actually have all these issues worked out. It does say that you need to set what these standards are, what these conditions are to be able to permit the next subdivision to occur. So that's a normal process with zoning. I mean, to rezon something and to say, well, sorry, we rezoned you, but you've got a ton of work left to do before you can do anything, that would be highly unusual and I think probably wasting everyone's time at this point because you really haven't done anything at this point. You've just said, in concept, we see that.
Okay, let me ask a more direct question.
Go for it.
I don't see a note on your can't chart for approval of the rezoning, where would you put it?
That's the master plan final approval. So the rezoning is going to occur when you adopt that P D D ordinance. That's the, that's the rezoning, which is together with the master plan.
So you got that in the middle of the second quarter.
Right, conceptually, conceptually. They still have some work to do, to be able to sort of meet some of the tests that are in the P D D ordinance today, but I think that they could, it's up to them, it's their schedule, you know, to meet.
Well, and I just feel like to address that the fact that they're coupled. It's not, we are not going through a conditional zoning. It's not, it's a straight zoning. Fact of the matter is, we've established that a master plan will be associated with this rezoning and is therefore conditioned on it. And we can suggest that any condition, any legal condition, be part of the master plan. And it could say, "You won't do any development for the next 10 years." If the developer agrees to that, that will be a legitimate condition upon which the rezoning could occur. Obviously, we're not going to make such a suggestion or a condition.
It's got to be voluntary, I'm sorry.
Right, so everything that, you know, we have to be in partnership and negotiation with the developer because everything that we desire, they have to agree to. Everything that they desire, we have to agree to. So it, it, we can, we can request any condition whatsoever.
And I'm not saying whether you have to, I'm just saying that you can. What you have set up is legally okay and very normal.
Okay, I think I understand your answer to your question. I just, I have a couple more things that are, they're really not so much questions for Mr. Lewis, it's just observations, you feel free to comment if you wish. As part of your, your study, you talked a lot about- As part of your study, you talked a lot about public transit because it was mentioned in the master plan. And it's almost sort of treated as a given that Pittsburgh is going to develop a mass transit system similar to, you know, what we see in the bus system in Raleigh or Chapel Hill or other large cities. And I think before we take that on as a given, we need to give it some more thought. Just from my personal experience living in Chapel Hill, it's been a long time since I read a Chapel Hill annual report by their planning department. But the last time I did, one of the things it reported was ridership in the Chapel Hill transit system, and it reported that something less than 10% of the population of Chapel Hill ever sets foot on a transit bus. It's one of the most expensive departments to operate in Chapel Hill. It's the largest single fuel user in the town, so it's the largest single polluter in the town of Chapel Hill. And it's a free bus system, which means it's obviously paid for by a combination of property taxes, donations from the university, donations from car borrowers, donations from even Pittsburgh puts a little bit of money in there. So before we buy into that very expensive kind of operations and maintenance, I think we ought to give it some additional thought before we treat it as a given in the master plan.
I think the reality of that situation is that the provision of transit services is probably not going to be for us or perhaps for most folks that are in this room. And that we see that the millennial generation, the kids who graduate from colleges these days, are actually very high transit users and very low on fuel users, most significant in the country. So I think there's things that are going to change over time, and we don't know what the price of gas is going to look like, and we don't know what the price of housing is going to look like in the next 30 or 40 years. But I think the conversation is really about making sure that you don't preclude it as a service.
Correct.
But not about whether you're running a circulator service on day one when the first building goes into place. I would never recommend that.
And I liked your point that this really isn't a Chatham Park issue, it's a townwide issue, and I'm not sure if we should saddle this master plan with getting that all sorted out.
Well, I'd like to comment on the Chapel Hill Transit, because I think one of the things that they recognize in establishing that transit system in cooperation with the other towns around it and especially the university, is they're not building parking spaces. They're building less impervious surface. So the university, I think, is quite clever, and I think the town's quite clever as well, and basically co-opt all the parking spaces in that town and to have them serve their needs by not constructing impervious zones and parking lots. So they are really reducing the vehicular miles traveled for a lot of citizens and really reducing the carbon footprint by doing so. So there are lots of aspects to it. The expense has to be considered against the environmental issues as well.
Well, we can agree to disagree on that. Chapel Hill Transit has been given a pass on alternative fuels. Those buses have burned kerosene with them for decades. Anyway, that's an issue for another time.
Yes.
Last comment I have is about public art, and I think you touched on it, again, the Chapel Hill experience. Chapel Hill is one of those towns that requires 1% of any capital project that's building a town, building a facility, to be dedicated to public art. And we found, we learned a hard lesson, and I know that I worked in Chapel Hill in the Public Works Department there, but that 1% worked really good for little capital projects. It wasn't that onerous. And then along comes a $50 million project to relocate the Chapel Hill Transit and Public Works Department, and now we have a half a million dollar public art budget. And we ended up with, you know, a $250,000 statue, a piece of sculpture at Public Works, and a $250,000 marble bench in the Transit, you know, in front of the Transit Building. And so I would prefer, and if we're going to go that way, some sort of a graduated scale that, you know, 1% is really good for a $800,000 project maybe, but not so good for a $45 million project, so that needs to be given some additional thought to.
I agree. When I went through it originally, I thought it was a very interesting and unique condition. It was volunteer. As part of that all, I'm suggesting is that if it's going to be in there, it'd be good to nail that down with something that you can hang your hat on and not just say you're going to develop it. Otherwise, take it out.
Yeah, I don't think Chapel Hill has any requirement for private enterprise with public art.
It is an unusual requirement, but not exclusive. I mean, there are communities that have done that. We worked in a community over and outside Memphis not too long ago, and they've got that as part of their central business district, a percentage of it.
We are a community of artists here, and we talk about preserving our culture. That might be a nice way to help preserve our artistic culture here.
That level of investment, you're going to keep a lot of artists busy.
Well, and with that said, that wasn't one of the conditions, volunteer. That was something that came from the town, so...
But they wrote it in and then they said...
They agreed to it, exactly.
But it was undefined. So I'm saying unless you can define it, take it out.
Well, what we're saying is, you guys help us figure it out. Because if we think it's a good idea, we'll put it in our unified development ordinance as well. So the idea is to capitalize on very talented thinking that we can co-opt so speed.
I'm not sure that you have sufficient legal authority to include that as part of your zoning ordinance. You may only be able to do that as part of a negotiated development process. That's something for your attorneys to take a look at. You can do it as part of this master plan because it would be a voluntary condition. Okay? But I don't think you could write into your zoning ordinance that says any project that's already got zoning has to contribute this amount to that.
Those are all my questions. I should have started out by thanking you for a very thorough and exhaustive report. I appreciate the hard work that you did. And if you have questions, we can...
I just, I'm impressed that you came up with this report in such a short amount of time. It's very similar, and I'm very impressed.
And I appreciate your patience. We were a day late because we were all shut down with this stuff for three days. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to say thank you for this report. It was quite well-written and quite easy to understand and comprehend. Thank you again. But let me ask you this question about if it's for a land use plan. You referenced in here that the land use plan lacks detailed plans and illustrations. Are you indicating or think that we need to update that land use plan to reflect those type of things going forward in the future?
I think there are some areas you need to consider in greater detail as to what you want to happen. You had some areas, you focused on the downtown specifically. There's what do you do with infill? How's that handled? How's parking managed in the downtown area in a very strategic way? What happens along 64? What's the vision along both new 64 and old 64, 64 Business? It's a much different road than it was 10 years ago. You've lost vehicles on that. Brian and I were having this conversation the other day, and off the top of my head, you've got to bypass, it means you drop volume on 64. And I'm like, "Well, I don't know, we're not really quite sure." So we pulled up the information. Sure enough, east of this, or west of this building, you've lost 50% of the volume. That has dramatic impacts on the retail that's out there today. And so what happens? What do you want to do about it? So there is more detail, I think, that you need to move forward with sort of due haste because you've got this big development knocking at the door, and this is the best time you will have to be able to do some of those projects.
And also, I just wanted to reiterate what you were saying about the timeline. Now, you had said, basically, we're in master plan preparation, and you're indicating there that you think it could be completed, well, the master plan, excuse me, final approval. Now, the timeframe we're looking at with that, are you talking about probably within the next four to six weeks? Is that what you're looking at?
That big green bubble is early in the second quarter, which is sometime in April, May, or June. I don't want to sort of cast too specifically all this, but yeah, I mean, I think it's doable. We'll say it ended before June 30th for sure. I think that's really reasonable to get all those other things that I've identified done and incorporated.
And then let me refer back to the discussion that Mr. Terry was having in Commissioner Philco, and he were in reference to the plan development agreement. Now, basically, if there are some things which are missing or we think we need to add in reference to that, that can be done under the additional elements and then incorporate it into that development agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just to clarify some points in reference to that. So basically, if we feel that there are things which are lacking or need to be addressed, that would be the time to address those.
And that's why I was very specific about saying these are things that we think would be left in the development agreement. Your neighbor Chapel Hill, essentially what they do, they nail down a lot of those specific detail elements after the rezoning happens, but before anything really major happens. The development agreement is the next thing that they do.
I think I'm unsure as to what is the list of things. On page 26, towards the end, the conditions for approval. And by that...
You mean approval of the rezoning?
Yes. That seems pretty granular information. And I think it includes a lot of the additional elements that we allowed two years to approve.
Right. But all I'm suggesting is, in particular, the design guidelines, that is a document that can be put together in a reasonable period of time. It won't take two years to pull that together, at least in a first step.
Well, they are the very similar items that we've included in our additional elements. And again, one of my key interests is to help this developer get started. And so if we're talking about knocking out what we thought perhaps to do a very good and thorough job would take two years, and we're compressing that into six weeks, two months, in the interest of not allowing any development to occur under our existing ordinances, that's not something that I support. I want to be able to do both things at the same time.
How can you protect natural areas at the same time that you're building community that's actually, make a difference levels?
Well, I take comfort in...
Take guidelines.
Well, I take comfort in my knowledge that there is only so many projects that will occur in the next two years. And as Mr. Lewis has stated, they're going to be in close proximity to the town because that's going to be the most cost-effective way for the developer to build the infrastructure. Those are practical realities that I trust and can rely on. So I don't think that in the next two years, we're going to lose hundreds of acres of virgin forest.
So it's more than that, I'm feeling we're going to have more stain now than we'll have this whole week.
I take comfort in the conditions of this master plan that say you're going to be limited to 5% of the residential development or 15%, and as Mr. Lewis is suggesting, 55% of the commercial as well. You're limited to that amount of development with, and unless you satisfy all of these other conditions in the next two years, your development is stopped. That is, again, another very practical, real governor on how much development we can do. I feel more safety in protecting the environment through the structure that we've created.
I just want to point out, we have started, we just approved the solar farm this evening, that's part of Chatham Park, we put, um, Bojangles as part of Chatham Park. We are starting construction, well, it's called Parky that you want to say. But I think, if I understand correctly, what you're saying is design guidelines, you're not talking about rewriting our ordinances in the next three months.
No.
He's talking about guidelines.
And it's entirely possible, I'm not looking at them, so I can't see their facial expression, but it's very possible that developers have already started to work on it. Because as they, as they convey property, they want a sense of consistency amongst projects because it's good for them to make sure that they're adhering to a set of higher standards as they transfer property to somebody else. So it's very possible that they've already been working on it or something that they can pull together fairly easily. Again, these aren't the most detailed elements, but in terms of dealing with these issues, I think they can do it.
However, with that said, if we rush through these guidelines right now, part of the master plan strategy is for them to be well-considered guidelines that we may adopt into the UDO and apply townwide. If we work on these in the next two to three months, we may do it in haste, and we may establish regulations in that district that we don't want to establish in our UDO. The idea was to have this merging of the best thinking that we could apply townwide and within this jurisdiction. So that is, I don't want to rush something when we're thinking of taking a bigger view of it and applying it to the entire town. And again, I know that the risk of development going crazy in the next two years is not a factor. It's not going to happen. We have water and sewer issues, we cannot deliver, the development team's going to have to figure out how to solve that. That's a real practical governor. Mr. Grusbeck, can you help me with the data that I asked for today that asked how many site plans and subdivision plans did the town of Pittsburgh process in the last two years?
Eight.
So eight projects came through the door in two years. If we had eight projects come through the door in the next two years, it'd be fine with me, working under our existing ordinances, while we work to a bigger picture of developing a broader view and co-opting some of their thinking and incorporating it into an overall plan. So that's my concern about rushing through the design guidelines in the next two months.
Let me ask you, Michael, or Commissioner Philco, if you're going to take that position, are you also taking the position that we're not going to do the rezoning for two years? I'm confused.
No, I'm not saying that at all. Because a condition of the rezoning is for the developer to work on the 13 additional elements and have the town satisfied with those conditions and those design guidelines within two years. The other condition is, if you don't satisfy the town, your project basically achieves a moratorium status where you can't develop more than 5% of the residential, more 15% of the non-residential. That, again, is another real stoppage in governor on this project. I think it's a remarkable opportunity to really work in conjunction with a developer and to get a very good product that will apply townwide.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just, again, simply suggesting that I have substantial amount of experience working with developments like, not necessarily like this, but developments really around the country, particularly around the southeast, and they come through, and the development of these design guidelines are not necessarily a very onerous document to be able to pull together.
Maybe we can look at some examples of other communities.
Yeah, I've got four or five sitting at my laptop right now. We're doing projects down in Bluffton, Bluffton, just outside of Hilton. They are the masters of the plan development. So they did have a massive amount of very large projects occurring there. Can show you what they look like and sort of the elements that they can pull together to be able to do that. I think it's reasonable. Well, you have to decide.
We still need to work on the ordinances, and that will take two years. But to me, this is something completely different, and it won't take a long time. I mean, it'll be hard work, but it won't take two years. It's basically just filling in the gap. The plan, the district from Chatham Park is very vague, and we talked about there needs to be more detail. And this is just creating that intention and creating that vision. It's not writing ordinances, it's just saying, this is what our intentions are, this is what we intend to do, and having it in writing and making a commitment to those guidelines. It doesn't preclude rewriting our ordinances and doing all the other work. To me, it's two different things.
Well, I will say that it is not rewriting the town's ordinances, but as... Well, I will say that it is not rewriting the town's ordinances, but as Mr. Lewis clearly stated at the beginning of his presentation, that master plan is the ordinance for project. It will be, unless that master plan does not state specifically a design element of the project, that design element will be governed by the ordinance of the town. But if it does specifically say something other, it addresses the same issue that the ordinance is trying to address, if it's in that master plan, the master plan rules. So these are actual ordinance items. They can be considered that way. And when I look at just one item, tree protection and landscape, I know that can be very, that can get into the weeds, pardon the pun, very quickly. And I think we can talk about how do we protect trees? What diameter trees do we protect? What species of trees do we protect? How close can you get to a tree? How much area does it take for a healthy tree to grow? If you preserve more tree area, do you get credit for it and have to plant less? There are so many nuances to it that I know we're going to have to deal with. And if we allow this project to do something that's not well thought through, and apply it to 7,000 acres of the town's jurisdiction, then arrive at a better standard, a more desirable standard for the UDO, we've given away 7,000 acres that doesn't have to adhere to the good idea we have. And I think it's going to take some time to do this. So I want us to find the best solution, and I think getting two years' time to work through the issues, if you said yourself a UDO is going to take two years, well, if they're working on the UDO with us, we're working on their UDO at the same time, I think we have a good chance of coming up with a very good product for that development and the town in general.
The only thing I'd add to it is that, as you probably know, they can work a lot faster than y'all can.
Well, we think we've addressed that as well.
Can you speak to the call?
I'm just trying to put some perspective on why I am for moving forward with the rezoning and working through these issues in the next two years, because I think it's a unique opportunity for this town to get really good thinking imbued into our UDO. And our ordinances, you know, I've been mentioning it for years now, but I think they're inadequate. And I had hoped our planning board years ago would have done a review, because we would be much better prepared today for this development had we done that. And we couldn't find that it was a priority for us, and I think we all recognize now how critical a priority it is. And it doesn't mean that it's going to be, it's going to go faster just because we all of a sudden recognize it is a priority. It is going to take time, there's going to be a lot of gnashing of teeth, there's going to be a lot of discussions, there's going to be a lot of public input. And it's a unique opportunity for us. What I want to do is allow this project to start some development under our old ordinances, give them the ability to market their property, to start to develop interest in that property. And when the projects start to come through, we will be in a better position with a unified development ordinance and an ordinance for that master plan that makes sense for the town. Any other?
I think you can get there.
No, I think we're pretty close on that one. We're talking past each other.
Mr. Lewis, you might want to stay reasonably close to the microphone. I think we're done with you, but I can't guarantee that. To kind of frame the discussion going forward, we don't have on the agenda to take any votes or make any decisions tonight on any of this. But I'll offer to my fellow board members for your consideration, and I went through here and I counted up 41 separate recommendations that Mr. Lewis offered. That's a lot to get your arms around. So I had a chat with a manager today, asking him if there was a way we could put all these 41 recommendations into a central spreadsheet, number them, restate the recommendation, put in a column that says whether the board is going to accept the recommendation or reject it for some reason, and then another column that assigns an action item. It's either the action item of the staff, of the board, of the developer, or perhaps the consultant if we choose to employ them in further tasks. And then the next column would be a target completion date for each of the 41 items that are listed here, just as a tool to kind of help wrap our arms around what's a very complex issue. Does that sound like something that would be useful to everybody?
I feel like we've accomplished a little bit of that with this. It's hard to say that a little bit more than that. I said I feel like we've accomplished a little bit of that with this already. I mean, I don't know how, but I guess you feel that.
Well, my sense is that we've got 41 recommendations in front of us, and we haven't made a decision on any of them. So what I'm trying to do is create a path to get to the finish line. That spreadsheet would be helpful to me, and I'm just asking if it would be helpful to the rest of you. Go down one at a time and say, do we accept this recommendation, do we reject it? If we accept it, whose responsibility is it to get it done, and how much time are we given to get it done?
One thing you might want to consider before doing that is giving the public a chance of a public hearing, or even a public a chance to force their view of, you know, if we're following that.
Anybody want to respond to that? I'll say that I think there's been a substantial enough changes in this master plan that a subsequent public hearing is in order, but I'm struggling with when's the appropriate time to do that. I don't know whether we should wait until we get a further refinement of the master plan. I'm not sure having a public hearing while the plan is in flux makes a lot of sense. I think it might be better for everybody to see these recommendations start to bear some fruit, and see the next iteration of the master plan, and at that point, share that with the public and then offer them an opportunity to come in.
I think that actually, in reference to this spreadsheet, that would be fine, or it may not be necessary, because I can, you know, review this based on this information in here. So, but in reference to another public hearing, as you just said, that would be in order. But I think that would be better after we have reviewed this particular information and we have discussed it in reference to what we consider in reference to these recommendations. So I think that would be in line with what Mr. Brucebeck said.
Would you like to start the spreadsheet?
I think the manager's already worked on that, too. We only talked about it a few hours ago, so I'm sure it's a lot of work on the agenda to do yet.
I have everything basically at the table. He gets a little muddy when he gets the conditions.
I think an important feature of that spreadsheet, if we're going to go that way, would be to differentiate between the recommendations and two items. One recommendation that occurs prior to zoning, those recommendations that are able
Yeah, I think that could be accommodated by just another column on the spreadsheet, pre or post action on zoning. So when it comes down to that, the meeting where we undertake to review those 41 items is going to be a long one. I guess the second thought I had was, would it be useful to get the staff to fill out many of those columns with a staff recommendation about, so we don't have to say, well, item number one, let's assign that to, let's assign that to the staff. Item number three, let's assign that to ourselves. Item number four, let's assign it to the developer. Perhaps then we could get Mr. Brucebeck to take a swing at those items, and then when we see the spreadsheet, it can be largely filled out, and then we can just go fairly quickly through it and say, yeah, we agree with that, we agree with that, we like the timeframe you're suggesting, move on to the next one, maybe we could work through it fairly quickly. And where we were not in perfect agreement, we'd slow down to have a discussion until we came to some level of concurrence and then move forward to the next one. So I don't know, would it be reasonable to attempt to do that at our next meeting? Is that too soon, or can we do that? Does that feel comfortable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we have agreements that we're going to-
Try the spreadsheet method, see if it works.
Any other comments on item number two?
Mr. Terry, I have one. I would just like to echo Commissioner Fielko's response to this. I really would like to see us move forward and get the developer moving, in this two year plan. I look at it as a warranty of the time that we can see what's right and wrong, and go through and handle our ordinances as necessary. I think we're really just, you know, blocking every week, we're just blocking this development from going forward.
And I-
If you don't do it the right way, then there's no way to undo it once it's been done. And we're talking about six weeks to three months, we're not talking about two years, we're talking about two weeks. You get it right.
We've been working on this during this two-year period, that the 5% and 15% non-residential. And I think that's a lot of time that we have to look at that. And I feel the developer will work with the town, as the town will work with the developer.
Mr. Farrell, I absolutely agree with you, and that's why I raised that whole issue about why can't we separate in the ordinance, approval of zoning from the approval of the master plan? It seems to be we handcuffed ourselves there. Perhaps we can talk about that some more as we're working through that spreadsheet. And I would, I think you can probably approve a rezoning and make the statement that conceptually you are in support of this idea without approving the fine detail of the master plan. Decoupling those two things would give us the ability to send a strong signal to the developer that we want to work with them on the project, but there's a lot of work left to do on the fine details of the project. And again, we might want to, should consult with our attorney about that language, how it went in there, and whether it's a big deal or a little deal, no deal at all to change it. So I don't disagree with you. I want to, too, want to give the developer the signal that we're working with you here.
But at this time, we don't seem to be giving that signal.
That's about the state of times.
One question. What you were saying was about, you know, approving part of it, the rezoning, and then later on, looking at the other particular camps. We approved the rezoning, are you saying that they can, would they be able to start the process then? Or they would not?
Well, I think Commissioner Fielko's made the point that we have existing regulations in place for review of site plans and the like, so if we approve the zoning but not the master plan, and let's just pick out of the air the example of the UNC Medical Office Building, why they couldn't come forward with a specific site plan for that, in the opinion of the board that the building, that building was consistent with the conceptual idea of the Chad Park proposal, I don't know what we could surgically remove that from the larger master plan and just deal with the medical office building. So I guess the long answer is a yes, if we're able to, small aspects of it, while we were concurrently working on what Commissioner Fielko wants to do, a longer time to do a better job of, if that makes sense.
Well, with zoning, you have to establish what the regulations are for that zone. And our zoning ordinance right now, it tells you if you're going to be able to see two, you know, all the rules associated with that land. What the plan development district does is try to get a far superior product than you can get through straight zoning. And what it requires and requests is for the development via a master plan to write guidelines under which the project will be developed. So if we were to rezon something without a master plan, we would be rezoning something that would have no guidance, no regulations as to how to develop, because it would not revert to one of the base zoning conditions of our zoning map and ordinance. So they have to go together. Otherwise, they would have asked for a rezoning to some other base zone without having to write their own rulebook, and would have followed the town's existing rulebook. The whole idea behind the plan development district is the idea that you can get something better by having a very specific rulebook written for that project.
Do you agree that they do need to do a better job of pressing a vision, at least mentioning this?
I will say that one of the strongest things I support out of the report is a better vision statement.
And again, make the set of sub-natural areas, because otherwise, we start building into a neighborhood that's worrying.
And I think that's part of the additional elements that talks about how you're going to do open space. And each time a small area plan comes in, it identifies where those open spaces are. And then every time a site plan and a subdivision plan comes in, you look back at the small area plan and say, that doesn't match that small area plan, you can't do that. Or this matches the small area plan and is perfect, go forward. That's exactly what you told us you were going to deliver, that's what we want, go forward.
I do think that some of it in the most important areas have been mapped out, and I think that we should go ahead and set them aside, even if we don't do these other things, I think we need to do that, because once the developer happens, we can't undo that. So to me, setting up the natural areas, even if we don't do all of these things, that should be one thing that gets done before.
Well, and I think small area plan requirements, at the 30,000 level, we say, tell us how you're going to do open space. And they're going to give us an idea.
Establish how much, what percentage.
And we have established that. And the figure is 667 acres of recreation space and whatever the-
It doesn't specify any natural areas.
No, well, it says open space. But in the small area plan requirement, it says, show us, show the town how you're going to develop in this sector, and show us all of those stream buffers, steep slopes, natural heritage areas. It's in this document, requires them to do that work. And that is something we have the ability to approve or disapprove if we don't like the way they're doing it, or if we like the way they're doing it.
Set aside in the beginning, which areas are protected?
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the manager's capital projects. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the manager's travel projects report. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're, if you're done with your part of the meeting, we're not done with ours, I ask you to, if you have conversations you want to have, please take them to the outside. Thank you. Go ahead, proceed, Burke.
Thanks. I want to take up a lot of your time. You had the, you had the update in front of you. The only, in things, I guess, that I would point out would be with regards to the generator installation, continuing to work with that water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Of course, as you recall, the wastewater treatment plant, we need to install the new generator there and then move the old generator to the water treatment plant. I think the recent bad weather that we had highlights the need to make sure that we get these projects completed in a timely fashion. I included a paragraph in there, the mayor and I had a little bit of discussion on contingency and what would occur in the event of, occur in the event of an electrical outage. And in essence, by simply filling our tanks, we are, we are okay in an operable sense for a limited period of time. For a long period, a longer period of time, a power outage, of course, we would need that generator power. And so that's, again, that's an overstatement, but that's important, to complete those issues. And if there is, or within, or within probably a month of the wastewater plant and within probably two months of the water treatment plant. Correct? The other, other issue with the wastewater treatment plant that's come up recently is we've had some what's called influent infiltration issues with wet weather. And what we're finding is that we're treating basically a lot of stormwater, which is pretty expensive to treat. And staff has gone through and kicked open manholes and lift stations where that sort of infiltration typically will occur. We haven't come up with anything. During budget discussions, we've identified some ways that we could probably take a little closer look at where the, where the stormwater is coming into our system. That's going to cost some money and some coordinated effort. And so we're trying to work up some options within the budget, see maybe what we could propose in advance of July 1st. A lot of this depends too, a lot of these studies depend too on when we're actually experiencing wet weather because if we, if we try to make these types of tests in the middle of the drought, they're not always as effective and you don't, you don't learn from those. So efforts there are going to have to continue because this is a problem apparently that we haven't experienced before. So we'll keep you updated on that. And then apparently Park Street, the stormwater improvement should be getting, should be beginning again this week now that we're hopefully clear with some of the bad weather. Although here on Wednesday, we could be getting slushy weather again, so, so we'll keep our eyes on that. NC sidewalk, NC 87 sidewalk, we submitted the budget adjustment there. We're going to continue the design work, keep you posted with that. And then kind of in a hurry up and wait with NC EOT and we're going to be letting bids for construction on that likely in April. We're still on track to get that completed at some point this summer. So I guess with that, I would probably open it up for any questions or comments or concerns or if you wanted to come along.
Any questions for Mr. Grusbeck? Thank you, sir. The only mayoral update I have would be, let's hear about the EDC activities. Actually, two board members were with me at Galway Ridge last week when the EDC made their, their second public outreach presentation to the local community group to help them understand some of the activities that EDC with respect to the super site in Siler City and Montier and with Chatham Park. We've had a good meeting. The folks at Galway Ridge were engaged and interested and I'm pleased to have Commissioner Turner and Mr. Fiago there also to help respond to questions. We have others set up. I don't have the dates here with me, but as I, as those appear on my calendar, I'll share them with the board members of other places where the EDC is taking that, that presentation to, to community groups. And that's all the updates I have. So, Commissioner, concerns? Mr. Farrell?
I have a thing this time.
Mr. Ball? Thank you all. There being no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second, like Mr. Farrell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.